consideration of a request for a variance to construct a pool and brick pavers seventeen feet into the critical habitat zone on property described as lot one, block fifty-one, Saint George Island Gulf Beaches, unit five, three twenty-seven Gander Street, Saint George Island Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Heath Galloway, Galloway Construction Incorporated, agent for George Plomel, he's the owner.
Pledge of the vote.
Chairman, I've got a question for me. Is this stuff, most of this stuff hurricane related, or is it, I mean, or is this all new construction?
There's two that are not hurricane related, the rest are pretty much hurricane related.
Okay.
This one's not hurricane related, this is a request for a pool to be constructed with some brick pavers into the critical habitat.
Okay.
And, you know, at the Board of Adjustments, I did mention to them that this is not a hardship basis, but it would be the pleasure of the board.
Is there something different that we do?
We, I, since I've been doing Board of Adjustments, I have not had a pool request into the critical habitat, no, so.
Well, I'm going to short circuit the rest of the board members up here, but for me, I want to make a motion to the night. I mean, it's a pool, it's not essential, it's not, I mean, I know it'd be nice, but it's not essential to protect the property like you would a riprap or some kind of wall or, you know, critical habitat is just that, it's critical habitat, so.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor to deny by Commissioner Jones.
Amy, just a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I guess I'm just thinking of standards of practice, and this seventeen feet into a critical habitat area is minimal, but I'm looking at standards of practice, and how are we permitted to disobey something into a critical habitat area? How did it get approved by you guys that have great standards of practice that we could breach that?
Well, an applicant can request a variance, however, I did mention to Heath Galloway, who submitted it, that this was not a hardship.
Yes.
And they did want to go forward to see how far it would go. The Board of Adjustments, they were made aware that there, it was not a hardship basis, and they moved it forward with an approval, that they were made aware, yes, sir.
Come on up.
Sure.
So, Mr. Plomel.
Hold on a minute, give me your name and...
My name's Heath Galloway, this is George Plomel.
George Plomel.
So, Mr. Plomel bought this house in the summer, and it was Jack Taylor's old house, some of us are aware of it. The house was built into or on the line of the critical habitat zone, so he wanted to add a pool. There is a concrete seawall on two sides and a canal, so if, looking at the impact of the habitat zone, we chose to put it on the east side, which seems to have less impact, there's, it's grass, there's not any, like, marsh area or anything like that, so that was kind of our hardship, is we were dealing with something that, we didn't have any other choice to get a pool, really, so we picked the less, the least impactful spot. So, I don't know if you want to add anything?
No, just, it's the best place we've defined on a property to put a pool, is, working without appreciating your consideration of it.
I mean, this could have gotten to the BOA in one of two ways, because the BOA also serves as something as a, as an administrative relief for a decision, so if Amy had said, look, I'm not going to recommend this, I'm denying this as an application, why you didn't go this route, I have, when I was county planner, this route was, was packed, was followed a couple of times, where through administrative action, you know, if some, the planner denies an application, you can then apply to Board of Justice for administrative relief, so they would have ended up at Board of Justice anyway, but just in a different setting. You know, I will say, I'm concerned that a pool is not a hardship, a pool is not a, you know, primary structure, you know, I mean, I know everybody wants a pool, but that's not necessarily, you don't necessarily get it, so I am concerned about the precedent we're operating around.
You know, as a homeowner, I just certainly appreciate, I have passion for what you're asking for, I just want to make sure that we are respecting standards of practice when something's designated like that as a critical habitat area, that there are rules that we should follow, and I believe when we, when we as a county have good reputation, that we follow state and federal guidelines and don't disobey with this, that, and that, I believe all of us have better property values because of our compliance. Sure, it hurts, believe me, I know how it feels, I just wanted to be sure that we are mindful of good standards of practice with regard to this.
Sure, and I think that's what we were doing, being responsible with the situation.
I can feel that.
I mean, understand, we build a lot, and I do respect the CHZ, and Mr. Plomel owns a bunch of homes, and he respects it as well, and so that's why we chose to do this path to bring it out, and this is what we think can get him what he needs, is a rental home and...
Yeah.
Make the most of his value of his house and have the least amount of impact on the environment there, so.
All around, you all around, are you in the critical zone all around?
On the north side and the east side, so we're the driveway where you come in there.
You know, it just seems optional to me, and I, I think if you're protecting life limit property, this is another thought, but recreational option penetrating a critical habitat area, to me, requires different thinking, and I, I'm just concerned about it going that direction, but I empathize with you as a property owner and somebody who wants to embellish the recreational opportunities there.
Didn't ever have them before, huh? Anything?
A variance for a pool?
I meant in the critical.
Since I've been on the Board of Adjustments for the past several years, I have not dealt with that. We've dealt with other things, you know, houses and different things going into the critical habitat, but I have not dealt with a pool going into the critical habitat.
We have standards associated with a house building with a critical habitat, but if you have, your footprint of the house is a critical habitat, then you were stuck at a minimum level, thousand square feet.
Yes, that is correct.
You know, minimize that, so we, we don't have a standard for pool, it's not, it's not a primary structure, so, I mean, I hear what you're saying, it's a poor decision on this, but, you know, it's, we've never done it before, there's a term on it.
I'm going to make the second from Mr. Jones's motion.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones to deny, second by Commissioner Parrish. Any more discussion?
All I would say maybe is if you want to do some more homework for this board, is it a potential option that we table this and find other examples, since we don't have a history of this decision making, maybe there's some other plots somewhere in other counties that did something like this? Would that be an appropriate amendment to the motion?
I don't...
We can...
Don't want to keep it open?
Well, I, they can take and withdraw it before we vote or whatever they want to do, but our group's shortness, you need to Franklin County, so you're not going to go over to county and have this kind of setback, well, it might be, but it's not determined for us.
Yeah, I see, okay.
If we, if, say there was one approved four years ago, does that make a difference for you guys? I mean, if I can go back in the records and find, or eight years ago?
I think it's just...
I don't know.
I think the homework should have been done before you guys came, and I, I just don't want a federal or state officer looking at how we disobeyed something like this.
Well, you won't get that, you won't get that anyway.
It's a county.
Well, you get somebody else in here saying, well, you did it once.
Yeah, right, that's another thing, it's standards of practice again.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I don't, I don't know, if we go back and find one that was approved, is there a so-called precedent set from that one, does that change your decision?
Well, what you can do is, he can, the best thing you can do in that case is withdrawing it and come back later, because if we make a decision on this, it's going to stand.
Do you mind tabling it?
I can't tab.
We have a motion.
Well, we got a motion, I can't tab.
Make a motion to...
I meant, they can tab.
No, the motion's second debate, so the only way to get out of this is either vote, which you don't necessarily want, or have one of those people just call their motion or their second, or whoever wants to vote.
Mr. Chairman, just point a quarter.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
If the board votes this morning, there's a one-year waiting period before they could even attempt to reapply, the board obviously has the option of withdrawing the motion in a second if they choose to, I'm not sensing that from the board, or the applicant does have the opportunity to withdraw the application before the board votes, but as I see it, those are probably the only three options that are available to the board right now, and you do have a motion in the second to deny this application.
Go ahead and pleasure the board.
All right, vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Thank you, guys.
Next on the agenda, I'm, go ahead, Nick.
Number five. Recommendation for approval, it's a unanimous vote, consideration of a request to construct a riprap revetment landward of the mean high water and enhance the existing riprap revetment. The property is located at twenty-five South Bay Shore Drive, East Point Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Dan Garlic, Garlic Environmental Associates Incorporated, agent for Jeanie Dell, the owner.
Pledge of the vote.
Let me ask a question, Mr. Chairman, for me. So, Amy, this is just putting back the shoreline that was taken by the hurricane?
It is.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones to approve, second by Commissioner Parrish. Any more discussion on this?
Amy, just educate me, get, does this get DEP scrutiny before we vote it off?
Anything that goes into the water has to have DEP core, but anything that is landward does not, they just have to have a variance. And anything that seaward of the coastal construction control line, and that, that's not in that area.
No, he's seaward of the coastal construction control line here.
No, sir, the coastal construction control line goes on the south side of Saint George Island, Dog Island, and the Gulf side of Alligator Point.
Yes.
Yes, sir, it doesn't follow along in East Point.
Coast construction control line is only on open waters of the Gulf of Mexico, the Atlantic Ocean, the Straits of Florida, so it's not in the Atlas Gulf Bay or any other bay or something.
What are you putting this, if I might, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Are you putting this landward to prevent more erosion?
Yes, sir.
Rather than out and trying to backfill, he's moving it landward to prevent additional erosion.
Yes, sir.
That's, you know, what he's trying to do.
All right, vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Okay, item number three is a recommendation for approval, it was a unanimous vote, the consideration of a request for an eleven-foot variance into the twenty-five-foot road right-of-way setback for an existing three-foot boardwalk to a six-foot boardwalk with a roof. The property is located at lot eleven, block J, unit three, eleven hundred and eighty West Gulf Beach Drive, Saint George Island Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Dan Garlic, Garlic Environmental Associates, agent for Rob Vitale, and he's the owner. They have an existing three-foot boardwalk that's into the side setback, so they're requesting eleven foot that envelops that three foot and extends it another seven foot into the twenty-five-foot setback for some improvements they would like to do.
Where's, is Dan here?
Yes.
Good morning, Dan Garlic for Rob Vitale.
Dan, when you're talking about consideration of requests, eleven feet variance into the twenty-five-foot right-of-way setback.
Correct.
So, what happens if you have something going on with the county, whether they, whether doing something in that right-of-way and these boardwalks are in the right-of-way, that prevents the county from doing anything within that right-of-way without tearing another boardwalk?
Not in the right-of-way.
I think, Sharon, but it's, it's from the setback from this property line setback.
From the right-of-way.
They're not going into the right-of-way.
Says twenty-five feet into the road right-of-way, I know, that's not right.
It's the property line.
Yeah, I mean, basically, we got, we're setback, this is a real interesting house because it's, it's one of the older ones, you know, it's like built...
So, the boardwalk's going on private property?
Oh, definitely, definitely.
Okay, well, that's not the way I'm reading it.
Yes.
Okay.
Right-of-way, then you got twenty-five foot setback, but this one, this one's on a corner too, it's twenty-five foot setback for both sides, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but the county's been pretty good about recognizing that and allowing, some allowances to get into that, to encroach a bit, and this, this is an older house, you can't move the house, basically, what he's trying to do is get the, he's redoing the boardwalk, he's redoing a lot of the wood, trying to get it up to standards, and that's the reason that we wanted to encroach this.
So, this is a covered walkway on private property?
Correct.
You're just into the twenty-five foot setback?
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Parrish. Any more discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Parrish, thank you for asking that question, because it was definitely coming, I read it the same way you did.
All right, vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Okay, number four is a recommendation for approval, it was unanimous, consideration of a request to place a vinyl seawall forty-two feet into the critical habitat zone and place six hundred and sixty cubic yards of filled landward, also requesting a ten-foot setback into both side setbacks, also placing rocks on the waterward side of the vinyl seawall. The property is located at ninety-nine South Bay Shore Drive, East Point Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Dan Garlic, Garlic Environmental Associates, agent for Patty Schuler.
Was this hurricane damage?
This was hurricane damage.
There was an existing seawall there, and now this is a replacement?
Yes.
I believe they...
Is that right, Dan?
Is that right, Dan?
Dan Garlic for Patty Schuler, she had a rock wall, and it basically, you know, you can imagine what this storm did to a lot of those areas over there, but the wall did what it had to do, but this storm really messed it up, so her house is in peril to some degree if we get another storm. She basically, this time, wants to put in a vertical wall similar to one that's next door, it's going to be right in line with this Tony Garcia that, before then, he didn't need a variance, now he's within fifty feet as well, but what she's going to do is pull the rock back, put the vertical wall in, take the rock and put it back in place, and it'll be a much better project, you know, with that, and then she'll be able to level a yard out, keep some of her trees, and so, but basically, it's, you know, based on the storm.
And she's replacing the linear square footage she currently has, it's...
No, no, she's gonna, she's drawing a line for where the, she lost a lot of sand.
Yeah.
But we're not here to try to clean that back, what we're trying to do is protect what she has.
Protect what she has, this is a net what she has left.
And it just so happens now that we're within the fifty-foot setback, I've got some of those over there more north of here that people actually had their land increased, but it's because they had high bluffs and the sand basically leveled out from the storm, and some of those areas, they got fifty feet of more area out in front of them, but they're really in trouble back here, with the vertical wall, you know, where the dune was actually messed up. In her case, she's a lot closer to the water.
Okay, so she lost, she lost the line.
Yeah.
Now, you're receding back to the loss, you're going to a new landward position, aren't you? You're retreating, okay.
And what, we'd be in line, there's a vertical seawall just to the south of here, so we'll tie right in with that, then bring the rock back in place, and she'll have a good protection that way.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, commissioners, a lot of, a lot of the residents, county residents that live on North and South Bay Shore have a cliff, took away several feet of property, so this is just one of, one of those. I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish. Any more discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? That pass unanimous.
Item number five, it was a recommendation for approval, it was unanimous, consideration of a request for a variance to construct a vinyl seawall twenty feet into the critical habitat zone and ten feet into both side setbacks with rocks to be placed at the waterward side of the seawall, property described as lot three, block C, Magnolia Pluffs, one thirty-five North Bay Shore Drive, East Point Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Dan Garlic, Garlic Environmental Associates, agent for John Allen and Mary Johnson.
Storm damage.
This is storm damage, they lost. They lost some property, yes, sir.
Pledge of the vote.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Parrish. Any more discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Okay, we'll go into our planning and zoning consent agenda, we have a critical shoreline application, there was a recommendation for approval unanimous contingent upon receiving the DEP and core permits, right now, with the government shutdown, it shut down the DEP and the core offices, so they're, they're running really slow about getting their permitting. Consideration of a request to construct a nine hundred square foot, single-family dock with a pier, where they have a hundred and twenty square feet of foot terrace located at one eighteen thirty-nine Bayview Drive, Saint George Island Franklin County, Florida, customer does not have their DEP nor core permits, request submitted by Dan Garlic, Garlic Environmental Services, agent for Melinda Cedar, and they do have a proposed house on the property.
You want this depending on getting the approval from DEP?
It would need to be contingent upon the DEP and core permits, yes, sir.
Pledge of the vote.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, but I have a question.
Okay.
Go ahead.
And it's not really necessary with us, but with the DOT and Corps of Engineer permits out there, so this is stating that they're not going to begin construction until they get those permits?
We won't even permit the job without, without having the DEP or core permits.
That's not the question I ask, the question is, they're not going to begin construction, and I know you're not responsible for that, but, go ahead, sir.
I mean, I'm just saying, we actually got the permits in, but we haven't been able to get it to you, and this, this one in particular, even though the Panama City Office for Core is shut down, a lot of these docks are under two thousand square feet, there's an automatic acknowledgement by the federal government that DEP can issue for them, so, you know, it's going to be helpful in some regard, in that regard, but beyond that, the Core is definitely in trouble, they've, they're working out of their homes over there right now, so it's going to slow everything down.
So, this issue's already been resolved, then, for this?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll get them, we'll get them to her, and it still can be contingent, I'm okay with that, but, we'll get them to her.
Okay. I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Okay, number two is a land use and rezoning application, there was a recommendation for approval unanimous, consideration of a request for a land use change from forestry agricultural district to rural residential, rezoning from A two forestry agricultural district to R six rural residential of a twenty-three point nine acre parcel known as seven eighty Hickory Hammock Road, Carebell Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Al Byrne and Mary Mather, and they're owners, this would be an approval for a public hearing to be set.
Oh, you're just asking for a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
That's automatic, oh, pledge of the vote.
So, this is just a rezoning change, what's the, what's the outcome purpose of the rezoning change?
No, they want a...
Land use change and rezoning.
Land use, Sam.
Ag, which is one to forty, to R six is one to ten, so theoretically, you have four, potentially four houses out there and stuff like that.
Well, we got to give them a public hearing.
That's correct.
But he's asking what, what's going on, it's going from Ag.
You say that A one, A two is, is one to forty?
Yes.
And then they want to go to R six, which is one for ten? And they only have twenty-three acres, that only gives them two houses.
Two houses.
Well, that's not part of the two houses, okay.
Okay.
Pledge of the vote.
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, clarification, so we're just, by this vote, we're allowing them to move forward to a public hearing?
That's the only thing, the public hearing, we're not approving the actual rezoning that has to go to a public hearing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous. Set up the public hearing.
Okay, the final plat application, it's a recommendation for approval, it was unanimous with the condition of cleaning up the survey portion of the plat, and that's, that has been done. Consideration of a request for a final plat approval of a one-unit subdivision called Leisure Landing, a two acre, it's a three acre parcel, also known as lots nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, Schooner Landing, Saint George Island Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Barbara Sanders, Sanders and Duncan, agent for Leisure Landing. We seen this last month, you've seen it a couple of times, it was two lots, then they decided to do three lots, so they went back for a sketch plat in December, and it was approved for three, three lots for a one-unit subdivision, and this is for their final plat approval.
Motion to approve.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish. Any more discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimous.
Thank you so much, we'll have a good day.
Keep up the good work, thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
To the public, you know, when we had these, I guess, planning on the Board of Adjustment, we're running the problem like that, some of these things, we can't help, because the storm took away that property, and we give them, but when we run into something like Mr. Galloway had, you know, it's, it's just different, thank you. Next on the agenda will be Mr. Alan Pierce.
Ms. Marsha Johnson.
No, Ms. Marsha Johnson, clerk of the court.
The clerk's office does not have a court.
Okay, no, no, report from the clerk, but next will be Mr. Alan Pierce, we stole a court immediately.
Okay, I have some few items I added because of yesterday's afternoon, I went to another meeting, but I'll go through what I have written, and I'll go to the other stuff. I've forwarded a contact of an email sent to Pam Burnett, the EM director regarding the responsibility of her contractor, Ralstan, that's the one she selected, working on the recovery of Alligator Point. I spoke to FCMC, and they are the contractors that say that Florida is providing us to work on Alligator Point, so what, what the issue is here is that Ralstan wants to make sure that they are not going to be responsible for things on Alligator Point, and they want to know, they want to know what their role is, and so I have drafted a long email to Pam that she would give her consultants, but I'll read it here, just because we have a few minutes, so I want to make sure we all understand where we're going, and I've, and I've sent this email not only to Pam, but also to FCMC, and just for the benefit of the people, FCMC is Frank C. McComb, he's the consultant that State of Florida has hired, and you all officially have not met them at the board level, Commissioner Bolt and I have both talked to them, and they went to Alligator Point taxpayer meeting on Saturday, so they've been, they've been introduced as there, but at some point, and this is the issue, the issue is that Ralstan is responsible to Pam for making sure all the damages are reported and get into the FEMA system, and so they want to make sure that they are also not responsible for Alligator Point, because if they are, then they need to be, you know, involved in that decision-making, and so I, based upon my understanding and preferences of the board and the situation we're in, I have recommended that Ralstan not be in charge of Alligator Point, but we let this FCMC group be in charge of Alligator Point, they were hired by the state, so the one benefit there is the state pays their fees, the other benefit is these people have some inside track, I want to, I guess I should say, for a solution that has not yet been available to us, and so I want to take advantage of their knowledge and their expertise and let them be in charge, and so this email that I wrote Pam, it basically lays that out. FCMC will come to you all at some point and say the same thing to you all, but I would just, I need to get it out there, because we're beginning the PW process, as we said, starting today, and I want to make sure everybody knows that FCMC is going to be writing these people, is going to be head of, leading the issue for Alligator Point. It may be over time that Ralstan gets some work out of this, you know, FCMC may say something, okay, this is the path we're going, Ralstan, you write up the PW, this is what we're doing, but we don't know yet, because we don't quite know what the solution's going to be. So, anyway, I'm just going to read this, I wrote it, so I might as well read it. All right, Pam, good morning, you and I spoke after, this was after the last county commission meeting, and you said you were going to have Ralstan contact FCMC directly about their rural contract for Alligator Point recovery. I certainly understand the need for you to know who was, who was doing what on Alligator Point, as you are the emergency head director for the county, and the county commission has made it clear they want to make sure all justifiable costs generated by Hurricane Michael be recovered. The Alligator Point Road sustained the most damage of any facility in the county, so it does represent a large cost to county, probably in the millions of dollars. Ralstan is currently assisting you in managing the county recovery, so it is logical that they also know what is happening on Alligator Point. Since I don't have, and I say, the county doesn't have a contract with Ralstan, I'm sorry, since I don't have... Since I don't have a, since I don't have a contact with Rollstand, please forward this to them. If they want to contact me further, they can feel free, and I've told them, and it's the same, you know, I'm making these comments to you all here on January fifteenth. Franklin County was presented with a unique opportunity after Hurricane Michael. As you know, the state DEM director visited our EOC at least once, and then visited Alligator Point separately. On at least two occasions, the DEM director sent key staff down for continued investigations. And Chairman Parrish and I met with various staff on the points at least two times. The damage to County Road three seventy, known as Alligator Point Drive, or Alligator Drive, was so extensive, the state has offered to dedicate some of their resources developing a comprehensive plan to rebuilding and protecting Alligator Drive. As you know, and I apologize for some typos in here. As you know, Alligator Drive was severely damaged by Hurricane Hermine in two thousand sixteen, and it took FEMA almost two years to obligate some two point six million dollars to rebuild the road. Repairs from the two thousand sixteen storm had not been started when Hurricane Michael tore through the same area and increased the damage to the road. As you also know, the residents of Alligator Point have been extremely critical of the county and our efforts rebuilding the road. When the State of Florida offered FCMC to Franklin County at no cost to the county, I wholeheartedly endorse this opportunity. Not only will the county not have to bear any matching costs associated with developing a recovery plan, we also won't have, we also won't be responsible for solving the various problems and time delays that will surely develop along the way. While we cannot seem to get the state to take back ownership of the road, at least they have now offered the opportunity or offered to assist in developing a recovery plan, and not only assist, but lead the recovery effort. This is an opportunity that I'll continue to encourage the county commission to utilize. What is a little unusual, and I understand is a concern to you, the local official, and you are the local official responsible for hurricane recovery in the county, is that FCMC is providing services to the county without a contract with the county. At this time, we are operating on a hand check agreement and word of mouth that FCMC is here for the duration of the development of an Alligator Point recovery plan. At some point, either at the January fifteenth meeting or at one of the meetings in February, FCMC will appear before the board, so the board can hear directly from FCMC of their commitment to Franklin County, and we will get those statements into the county commission minutes. I do, I do believe this needs to be done so that you can be assured that the county commission is not expecting you or your consultant, Rollstand, to be leading the recovery effort on Alligator Point. I will tell you that, that FCMC is out at the kickoff meeting right now. It's possible that Sarah Kelsey will be here this afternoon. I had Michael put her on the agenda in the event that she is here, so you all, you're in a public meeting setting this afternoon, so you can get that from her today. But if she can't make it because that meeting overruns, then she will be here on February fifth. So either this afternoon or February fifth, you'll hear from them directly. There is, of course, more to repairing the road than just a Alligator Plan. At some point, at least one PW will be written, will have to be written, that FEMA will approve, that will obligate FEMA funds to rebuild the road. The problem is that the PW cannot be written until we know if we are successful in purchasing some fifteen to twenty private lots in Alligator Point so we can relocate the road. Rollstand is here to assist you in writing PWs. So something has to be prepared and submitted to FEMA during the period that Rollstand is here writing PWs. And this, and I just go on talking about that. So they're out there now, the kickoff meeting is going on, as we say, it's on January fifteenth, on January thirtieth. And I will finish reading the rest of it. So we hope, I hope you all understand that the position I think I'm representing to you all, the position that FCMC is in, and you'll hear it directly from them either this afternoon or on February. So is there any comments about where we're standing, Commissioner Bolt?
I just, it sounds again like good communication. We don't want checkerboard help, we really, if FCMC is coming forward as they have been, we want to give them continuity of all this and have one vendor focusing on everything, right?
Right.
That's what we need.
I mean, FCMC is a, is a planning consulting firm, and so I, you know, when we get down to seeing, when it comes to designing the road, then they may not want to do that. But right now, we need, right now, and I'll say this to you all, I'll say this afternoon again, the focus is trying to create a new right of way by the access to the private property and moving the road inland. That is the direction that we think is best for Alligator Point, and best for the road, and best for the county as far as future maintenance costs. We don't know if we're going to be successful, because we have to buy all the lots, not just one of the lots, or, you know, everybody's got to participate in this thing. And so that's something that FCMC, they met on Alligator Point on Saturday, they discussed that, and they are taking the lead on that at this time. And we will just know in a few weeks, hopefully, whether we're going to run into some obstacles. It won't be, you know, months down the road, but a few weeks, because we have to know whether we're going to have, whether this is going to be successful or not. If we can't buy the property and we run into condemnation issues, then admittedly, we've got to back up and see what other options we are, because FEMA does not participate in condemnation proceedings. I mean, that's just, I just have to tell you that, because that's going to be a major problem. If people, for whatever reason, legitimate or not, you know, say, I just can't sell, I just don't want to sell, I just, you know, and that's going to be a major, major problem. We'll have to wait and see if that happens.
I'm sure a lot of people are visual, as I am, about planning and what things look like. So when appropriate, I would really hope we'll begin to see some sketches and some conceptual drawings and some planned forward timeframe frames.
Okay. All right, that's all that I have on that. The second item, as the board may recall, at a special meeting on October twenty ninth, the board voted to create a citizens committee to review the county's response to Hurricane Michael. I was out of town at the time, but when I got back, I met with a group of citizens who had made the request. While the board never officially, while the board never officially appointed these citizens, I took the initiative to use their concern and interest and asked them to create a scope of work that would incorporate their concerns. They have created such a scope of work, and I have attached it to my report. It's a one-page item with two parts to it. I recommend the board use this scope of work as a base for contracting with a professional third party for an after-the-storm review. As the board may recall, there was a great deal of community concern about the county response, and this review would be an opportunity to learn from any mistakes and take corrective actions if necessary before we have another storm. Before any work is done, I will come back to the board with a proposed cost of this review. So right now, I'm asking for board action, direct me to contact some professionals and come back to the board with a proposed cost for the scope of work that the citizens have created.
Pleasure to the board.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Parrish. Any more discussion? Yeah, we need to do that, because really, before, if you think about it, we haven't never dealt with a storm this high. The highs we had were two or three. And we got the real deal this time, where we, and we were blessed still, and went further west. But we do need to kind of check everything out and see what we can do, because who knows what the preacher's bringing?
Right, right.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All the poll, they pass unanimous.
Thank you. As the board is aware, the county stopped the development of the restore plan, and this is your BP money, because we wanted to focus on what Triumph may fund. Now we, now that we see how restricted Triumph funds, and now that Hurricane Michael has come through, I recommend the board advertise for another restore consultant so they can provide assistance on finishing the restore plan, which is called the MYIP, or Multi-Year Implementation Plan. So I'm asking board action to advertise on RFQ, Request for Qualification, for consultants to assist in development of the county's MYIP and other restore-related activities. The US Treasury had previously approved a planning grant for Franklin County to develop the MYIP. The planning grant expired, and I have spoken to Treasury staff before the shutdown, and it's my expectation that Treasury would approve another planning grant to finish the MYIP. So I'm asking for board action to get a restore consultant here who's familiar with all the process that's gone on since the last time we did restore and worked with Treasury, and get our restore process kicked back up for you all to begin to access those funds. There's some eight point eight million dollars there that are available for a variety of purposes that the county may want to use now we've had Hurricane Michael come through. So I would say, let's get somebody on board, and it will guide you all then in what can be done.
Pleasure to the board.
Second.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. Discussion? Alan, how long we voting for to get this on?
Well, I would say it'll take probably a few days. I needed to write up the RSQ, based upon some drafts I have from other counties. But advertise thirty days, so I was thinking in March you'd be selecting somebody, and then, you know, this summer.
No, I guess my question would be, how long would they be?
Well, I'll tell you what, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, when we first started this with Duberry, the other contractor, it was going to be a long drawn-out process. Treasury has refined and gone through enough of these MYPs, they've shortened down their expectations for what needs to be done. And so this is going to be, I would say, that once you have your projects in mind, that it's fairly straightforward now for Treasury to approve them. It wasn't at first. Treasury went through all these machinations about, you know, it's just a nightmare. So I think, I would say, I don't want to give a timeline, because I don't really know, Mr. Chairman, but fairly short. What we have to be reasonable about is what is eligible for funding. So, you know, we just got to get the consultants in who can give you the best advice, because I have not kept up with all the things that Treasury's done, all these, it's been almost a year since we looked at it. Get them up to speed, get you all up to speed on what can be done, and then get a list of projects and write it up and send it in. I will tell you the one key thing, or one of the key things, is that Treasury will not approve an MYIP for projects where your total amount of money exceeds what currently is in your account. There's eight point eight million, well, there will be at the end of two thousand nineteen, eight point eight million dollars. So that's the ballpark figure you all have to work with. If you approve, you know, twenty million dollars worth of projects, then Treasury's going to say, no, you know, you can't do that because the money's not available yet. So stick around eight and a half million dollars, and that'll give you the ballpark for things you can, you can do. I will say one other thing, which is contrary to where we were going last time. The state of, all our other consultants, in the previous episode, we did this, and everybody else had the embolism. Oh, this is the opportunity to leverage money. And you do want to leverage money if you can, but there's a risk with leveraging money, and we've learned, and Treasury's said this now bluntly. If you leverage money and you give, if you give Treasury a project on your MYIP that has a couple different pots of money, now Treasury all of a sudden has a responsibility for looking at all these other pots of money. And it becomes very complicated and slows the process down. I use Gulf County as an example. Gulf County has a multi-million dollar beach renaissance project going on right now, multi-million dollars. And part of that's being funded by Restore, and through their MYIP project, but only part. So what they did was, even though they have money from the State of Florida, and they have private individuals who have already been billed for their, for their beach, they only identified on the MYIP that part of the beach that Restore's paying for. So even though it's a five-mile project, if the money for Restore on a linear foot is only going to pay for a mile and a half, they just sent a mile and a half beach renaissance, even though they're advertising for a five-mile project. And so Treasury was okay with that. Treasury said, just tell us what we're paying for, tell us what we're building, and that's all we care about. And so I would recommend that we do the same thing if we get in that situation, that we identify what is going to be used by the Treasury money, and that's what we identify. And if there are other components to it, that's fine. Treasury doesn't even want to know about it, because it just complicates their life, because now all of a sudden, they got to review all these other stuff going on. But your consultants will tell you that in much more detail once we get up on board. Did we vote?
Not yet.
Y'all ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All the poll, they pass unanimous.
Okay. The next item is, I have three more things. So even though there's the government shutdown, I was surprised to get an email from the US Corps of Engineers yesterday, or I forget what day the thing was yesterday. And so Commissioner Jones and I are going to have a conference call tomorrow with Corps of Engineers representatives out of Mobile about the East Point Channel and moving forward with the dredging projects in the county. Reason I mention that is because we are tied at the hip with the East Point Channel and the Corps of Engineers and us, because we had put into our consortium funds money to dredge the East Point Channel, but the Treasury came out, and the Corps, Corps of Engineers got money out of the US Congress for dredging. So we're going to use their money first, they didn't quite get enough. So we're tying, we're using their money to tie into our money, because that makes our money last longer. I mean, we initially set three million dollars aside, the Corps only set two million dollars aside. So we may take, we may have to take a million of our dollars to dredge the East Point Channel. But guess what, that leaves two million dollars left for some other things. So it's beneficial to us to use the Corps money. And even if we didn't use the Corps money, they've got the permit anyway, so we're tied to them, because they have the permit, and they're going to hire the contractor to dredge the channel, and they've got the design. So tomorrow, we'll have a conference call, Commissioner Jones is going to come over, and we'll get an update about how we're going to tie these two funds together and start moving forward.
Well, did they get the permit for this West End?
I have, I, all I know, all I, I can't answer that, because we, I, all I did yesterday was get the conference call set up. So I don't, I don't have any content. I'll answer tomorrow, now that they don't have it.
Tomorrow, find out if they, do they have it, or?
I know they have told me in the past that that one was not a problem for them, because we have a disposal area. It's just a matter of going through the formations to get that disposal reapproved by DEP, they already approved it once. The issue is, we got to, we got to dig out the disposal area and rebuild it, and that's going to take some money. But as far as getting it permitted, they had previously said that wasn't a big problem for them, because it was already a known disposal area.
Well, how about asking them what we need to do so we're not specific?
Okay.
So we can get that channel over the bridge too. It's in bad shape too.
Oh, yes, yes, sir, yeah. I did go to the Triumph Board meeting yesterday, it was in Gulf County. And again, they, they had a long presentation by the Gulf County Property Appraiser about the damage in Gulf County. He estimated that his tax base over there, and I'm paraphrasing, was, he probably lost between ten and twenty percent of the tax value over in Gulf County. I don't know, we shouldn't have had that big a hit here, but we certainly had a hit. So what I'm going to do, and they didn't make any motions, the Triumph Board has said they would assist counties in repairing and replacing some of the tax revenues. So the property appraiser's in the back of the office, so sometime soon, I will get with her, and we'll make an estimated effort, or not estimated effort, we'll make an effort based upon estimated losses to Triumph to get an idea. Right now, Triumph is just gathering information. I know that Gulf County asked for twenty-one million dollars worth of relief, that's not going to get funded, because they didn't have twenty-one million dollars worth of tax loss, as far as, you know, income based on mileage rates. But what they are going to get, I don't have any idea, Triumph didn't say anything. But I think we need to get something in the hopper, so they know that we are seeking that allocation also.
Alan, wasn't there three counties that bundled themselves together to ask, as a unified group, money from Triumph for what we're talking about?
Well, I don't know that the three counties bundled together, because everybody's got their own tax issues. But Gulf County submitted theirs, Bay County submitted theirs, we sent a letter saying that we were interested. So I mean, we three counties have sent things. When you get west of Gulf County, I'm sorry, when you get west of Bay County, there wasn't really that much damage. So maybe the bundling is a sort of a conceptual arrangement.
But this offer from Triumph to provide us with potentially tax mitigation money, I presume they're relaxing the application process for this goal?
There's been no, one of my problems is, once the meeting, seeking more guidance, there's been no guidance by Triumph on what we need to do to get this. I know there's resistance when Gulf County said, well, we need twenty-one million dollars. And the problem with that, with that request is that's, it's well in excess of the tax revenues they are generating. I mean, they only, they're about our size, and they generate five or six million dollars in tax revenue. So twenty-one million dollars would be everything for multiple years, and that's not going to happen. But they didn't give me any idea about what is reasonable.
Let me ask you a question, Alan. On this, on that, on that Triumph decision, will that take away from your money, other monies?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
It's your money, you're basically, you were, they were giving you part of your money, yes.
Okay, in other words?
Yes, yeah.
So they're going to cut out, they're going to cut out some other projects?
Yes, 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 yes. I mean, that's how I see it, Commissioner. I don't, while, we are allocated by, by state law that we get fifteen million dollars out of this allocation of Triumph money, and there's other Triumph money out there, I am sure that the tax money they give us will, will come out of our share, will not come out of the competitive part.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Rhonda Skipper, property appraiser. Like I was telling all of you before, the fact that we have the ten percent limitation on taxable as well as three percent of the CPI, whichever's the least amount on homestead, that's going to keep our taxable loss from the hurricane down a lot lower than the actual, the actual market value loss. So we're going to definitely have some loss, but it's not going to be to the huge extent of what Bay County and Gulf County lost.
Yeah, I know. They have way more damage than we have.
Whole lot more, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Which just seems, Rhonda, it seems like you want to keep a surprise of our strategy for making that proposal for what monies we would suggest we need.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I had presumed, well, they haven't said this yet, Rhonda, I had presumed that the Triumph staff would say, you know, counties affected by Hurricane Michael, please get a letter from your property appraiser stating the estimated loss, and then do you all calculate your current mileage rate, and this is the amount of money that you'll be eligible for. I just assumed they would give us a formula. They have not done that.
Actually, I was just recently contacted by the Florida Department of Revenue who said that President Trump had issued a request through them for us to provide as soon as possible an estimate of actual taxable loss and our current mileage rate.
Okay, well, I would say then we would use that same number.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Whenever you got that ready, just give it to me, and we'll...
Wish I had it yesterday.
All right, then the last thing is, related to the consortium, there's a meeting on January thirty first in Tallahassee that I think Commissioner Parrish is going to go to, and I might end up going to also, just because it's nearby. And the ARP, we had talked, we had talked, and there had been a motion made for the ARPC to assist us in doing their, their, our consortium grant applications. And I have a copy of the contract that ARPC just left this morning, that attorney hasn't seen. ARPC is back there right now. This is for Gulf County, so right now, ARPC is going to do Gulf County, Hope Franklin County, and maybe Will Coe County.
Jefferson.
Jeff, I'm sorry, Jefferson County. So we're trying to utilize resources that are in our area, that are, that are, that we're part of already to assist everybody in getting applications through in a timely fashion. So I'll give this, a version of this to Mr. Schuer, and we can go over it next meeting. So I'll give this, a version of this to Mr. Schuler and we can go over it next meeting or two. There is a Triumph, sorry, consortium meeting in, in Tallahassee. There's an application process for consortium funds right now, but they are asking counties submit funds for feasibility studies and design efforts. Well, we don't need a feasibility study for dredging the East Point Channel or the Two Mile Channel. We already know we need to do it, there's no, there's no study to be done. And, and the design work's to be done by the Corps of Engineers, so I don't need any, so I don't, I wanna give you assurance and the board assurance, we're not missing an application opportunity because we don't need to apply for feasibility funds. Later on in the spring, they're gonna do another round of applications to begin the construction. And that's, tomorrow's conference call is gonna talk about trying to get into that so that we are ready to start construction as soon as possible. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, anybody else got anything from Mr. Parrish?
I was gonna say, there's a one-thirty meeting, it's an annual public hearing, and we'll talk about all your points that time.
Okay, well, y'all best y'all can on the call because that's our working waterfront.
Yes, sir.
And we need to get it up and running. Next on the agenda will be Mr. Michael Marone, County Coordinator, reporting.
Okay, Commissioners. Inform the Board, item number one, inform the Board that it's extended the permit fees waiver for anyone doing Hurricane Michael repairs to their homes to January thirty-first. This was done to allow homeowners the opportunity to get a better understanding of the FEMA fifty percent substantial damage rule and decide on a path forward regarding their damaged homes.
Good.
Now, question's item number two. At the Board's December eighteenth meeting, Ms. Heather Riley, your supervisor of elections, came before the Board and explained that the building that the county is currently renting for her office is inadequate as it pertains to security and space, and asked the Board to consider purchasing a bigger building here in Appalachia, Colorado. There was a motion at that meeting directing me to negotiate a purchase price with the owner, get an appraisal of the building, seek, and seek preliminary loan terms with USDA. During the holiday break, Commissioner Massey informed me that Centennial Bank, one of your two local banks, wanted the opportunity to be considered for financing if the Board was indeed going to purchase this building. When I presented this request to the Board at the January second meeting as a mean of adding to the portfolio of information that the Board directed me to gather, it sparked a conversation regarding the county's uncertain financial future and the timing of this purchase. With this in mind, is the Board, is it the Board's intention for me to pause and gathering information on the building Ms. Riley asked the Board to consider? I just don't wanna go out and spend money for the appraisal, Commissioners, if, even this morning you guys were talking about the financial future here.
Yeah, well...
I mean, so, that's what I'm asking, further direction from the Board.
Now, that building right now, it, they had some people done some, tried to come and do some work on it. They said the thing messed up. The building in bad shape. You talked to the lady, they can't drill holes in my hole without, without messing with it.
You're talking about the existing election office?
Yeah. Yeah, it's in bad shape. I mean, how many more people got to tell us that building getting ready to fall? It's time to do something about it. We got, we can look and say, we can look up and say, we, we need this, you need people safe. We got to go by what the government says. It's not in compliance. We got to get somewhere in where the building gonna be safe, where the building pulled to have a fence around it. Don't have a fence around that. We gotta get something secured.
Well, I had, the clerk said, has there been some repairs done to the building that make it more safe than it was?
Has Harry resolved the issues?
He told me he was going, big...
I was trying to get a...
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, basically, as soon as we gave him the indication, I said, what we were gonna do, we're gonna resign the lease or not. Yes, then he was going here, ready, I had Ram Jack give him, give him an estimate and explanation of what needs to be done to secure the building. So I don't think it's been done yet, I don't know, but he said that he would.
But why, why are they gonna stay there? Why are we staying in the building that is too small? The lady said, and if you'd have been there, you'd have seen it yourself, I was there during the last election. The building too small. It, it, it's inconvenient, we had to move down here. We need a bigger building. That's just the bottom line. You don't have no way to put, and no, no way to put them, with all the people in there, you've got all that equipment, you're gonna tell, one day, one, some of that gonna get messed up, and you're gonna, you're gonna have some more expenses. You got a big election every two years. You have a big election. You have people coming in there. We had to push out, pull, you had to push out children, tell the people, get, get back, get back, get back. It, it's just not enough room. You need a bigger...
Like this building down here, it's, it's old, ain't it? The one they want to buy is really old. How long's it been here?
It's been, um...
It's been, um...
Rhonda, you know how long it's been in the county?
I don't, right off the top of my head, I just remember from growing up here, it's been a little...
It's at least seventy years old, probably, ain't it?
I hope it's close to it.
It's older than that.
Yeah, it's a lot of money to sink into a building that old, and that one being in that bad a shape over there, you know some, have some issues with that one.
Well, it's still, we still got to, still need a building. No matter what bill or do...
Well, yeah, of course, this is where he's, he got frustrated because there's, there are other options. The county owns property behind here, we own jail, we own property here, we own property behind the annex here, there are options for you all, land you own, maybe you have to build something which takes time and costs money too. And no one's decided which is the cheapest route to go, I don't, I don't...
Well, if you build something, it'll be ready by the next election.
It could, should, ought to be, I mean, ought to be able to get done that thing.
I mean, you, you will have everything. The first, I mean, it's simple stuff like a fence. And with the Fed, we didn't tell them, we didn't make that, that law, that come down from...
Homeland Security, sir.
Homeland Security. And they gonna, they gonna check on this one day. I mean, they, you gonna look up and see them badges in there. We got to do something.
Well, the Election Department got the surprise when we had a sudden recount of ballots, and we, we didn't have a moment to plan and therefore, I was there with you. It was standing room only that particular day. And I do know the security issues of having to relocate suddenly when we didn't have enough room. I'm wondering if we can certainly recognize the intentions of, that we need a new supervisor of election building, but we have alternatives in case we have a crisis of recounting, perhaps coming here into this building, you know, for that moment in time as we plan ahead for a new, a new facility. I'm just worried about this hurricane spend, and spending, I really am. That's my concern more than anything, and I just don't wanna obligate, yes, ma'am?
We got a...
The clerk asked that we table this at least till she was back. Erin's preparing a list of things that have been spent from storm.
Okay.
And she asked that we table it until she could be here.
There's a lady can tell you if you can afford it or not right now.
There you go.
Standing room only ain't just happening, it's been happening for years out there for elections, for years and years and years. We got plenty of land, we got land here, we got some on the east side of the river, I mean, far as building a building is no problem. We gotta see if we can afford this building.
Mr. Chairman.
We got a lady out there sitting there building, but her power's in bad shape too.
Even if we try to move forward building, the building, Wood Steph is talking to USDA, correct? Yeah, I have to talk to them about changing the aspect of the loan to some, to some degree. And the government's still shut down, so that's still not a conversation we're having right now. And we won't need a, what, Commissioners, what I don't wanna do, if we're gonna put a whole, I have no problem with that, I just didn't wanna spend the money on, on appraisal of a building that the Board really doesn't wanna move forward with right now. So if we're looking at maybe perhaps building a building, Commissioner Bolt, if we're gonna look at future plans, that's fine, then I know to put a pause, you know? And also, in all fairness, tell the, the property owner that we're not interested right now, he needs to do what he wants to do with his building, and then we could just move on.
I'm gonna make a motion, we table this until the clerk, and, and the finance office has a chance to come up with the numbers and bring them back to us at a later meeting.
Sir. I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish to table, and second by Commissioner Jones to table. Any more discussion?
Just, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I just want, for my part, to, to say, regardless of, of what's going on or whether we go forward with building the building, or we finally decide to, to buy a building, that one or somewhere else, there are issues with that building, they're not gonna go away, and we're talking about how old another building is, and the building she's in presently is probably older than the one we're talking about. It's been there for a long time. It's bad enough that a company come in to do internet services that she had signed up for some time back, our supervisor, and they had to put on their report that they couldn't do the install because they were afraid to drill through the building to put the wire in it. And they had to give something on their report. So it's not a issue that we can just continue to ignore, and nor should we be paying the lease for something that's that bad. So that's just my thoughts on it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I support the, we, we definitely need to consider a new election building, and should the feds come in with their badges, we have now recorded this morning our intention, our recognition to move forward in this idea. We just have to take priorities where money is right now. So we've covered this ourselves in terms of the recognition that we need a new election office. With regard to bringing it up to the best standards we can right now, the wiring, I certainly would be concerned about internet wiring, and I, I think we ought to challenge the vendor to look at it more carefully and see if we can get that resolved right now because that is a critical issue.
Well, we had, we had a situation, one waiting on the hood and see what he gonna do one. But we got workers in there, you know, on safe place. That's the bottom line. All right, any more discussion? Y'all ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously.
Commissioners, item number three. During Ms. Cannington's review of the Weems CEO report at your December eighteenth, twenty eighteen regular meeting, there was a motion that included negotiating terms of an agreement with Mr. Cannington that would remove the interim from his CEO title, therefore changing his status to permanent. Chairman Lockley requested that these terms be presented at today's meeting for approval. I met with Chairman Lockley and Mr. Cannington, and they agreed to a fifteen thousand dollar increase to his salary, bringing his total salary to a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars per year with no benefits or payout clause. In addition, Mr. Cannington is asking for a housing allowance of up to two thousand dollars per month, month, for three months, as the house he was renting with the expectation of purchasing has been placed under contract with another buyer. So he is looking for another house to rent or purchase. The Weems Board of Directors recommended these terms, and in about six to nine months will perform a review of Mr. Cannington's performance, which will include preset goals, benchmarks, and expectations to determine if negotiations for a longer contract, perhaps with a reduced salary offset by benefits would be appropriate. Board action to accept the fifteen thousand dollar salary increase and the three-month housing allowance.
Plays of the vote, discussion?
And I'll say, one thing, Commissioner Bolt had asked me earlier last week to gather some information from Florida Housing, Florida Hospital Association, and some, a different Mercer and different people that do, and I started that process of gathering that information. We're within range, but I, I won't have it as a package to give to you until later this week because I was out sick for the most of last week.
I think that, I myself think this is a better, I know it's a better deal than what we're getting at. Those at the present, we running about what a hundred and nine a year when you add it up?
Roughly, yeah.
So, and we...
As an interim is what you're asking with all the expenses?
With all the expenses, we, this here is cheaper, and, and there's no benefits like the other one we're getting. We ain't, we won't have that extension thing, I mean, that six-month deal, it's, it's where you got to pay him six months if, if he go tomorrow.
Yeah.
Then you got that, like, like the other one had.
And I'll say that two thousand dollars is up to two thousand, not necessarily, and you'll have to bring that to the Weems Board of Directors for approval, but that's a maximum cap, not that he'll use the entire thing, it's just a maximum cap for the three months.
And if he ain't found him a house in three months, he on his own.
Yeah.
Right?
Pretty much.
We paying for it now?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm with it, saving with the one sixty-five, I'm just one voter, but the two thousand a month, I have an issue, I mean, that's kind of hard, I mean, it look like he can afford a place from that type of money, you know? But I'm just one voter.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? Michael?
Yes, sir.
The thing, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's fine.
Determining here, I wanna make sure I'm understanding what's being said about the buyout clause, that's referring to what we had to get through with...
Mr. Cooper.
Mr. Cooper, when he left, the seven-five thousand.
Yes, where we had, after he left, we still had to pay six months' worth of his salary.
Right, so that's not included?
That's not included. And there are no, let me go a little bit further, Commissioner, there are no benefits, there's no health insurance, there's nothing else, nothing tied to this, the one sixty-five.
And this recommendation is from the Board of Directors of Weems?
Mm-hmm.
Motion to approve?
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones.
Just, just a point that in determining this gentleman's salary, we went to an objective test as to whether or not that salary is appropriate, and we got, we got evidence from the Florida Hospital Association and how they pay their executives relative to this. So we're not just dreaming this number, we have some support for what that is valued for him. Okay?
I got a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I second it.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Mr. Bird, Commissioner Bird. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I got one comment from my, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
You know, I, I'm worried about, can the hospital sustain this salary? I mean, it's been a year since they've had to come back here and ask for money to operate the hospital, which is very good. I hope that continues, but sustainability of, of this type of money, uh, concerns me, and like Commissioner Massey, two thousand dollars a month for three months for housing. And I too believe that out of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars he ought to pay to pay his own housing. And that's a comment I wanted to make, and so...
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I oppose.
I oppose.
That passes three to two with Commissioner Parrish opposing and Commissioner Massey opposing.
I have number four, Commissioners, another Weems matter. I'm requesting that the Board appoint a new chairman to the Weems Board of Directors. My appointment as chairman was only temporary and with the expectation that there would be a better flow of communication between Commissioners and the Board of Directors to include Commissioners' goals for the future of healthcare in the county, along with other management and operational improvements. Based on discussions and motions made during Ms. Cannington's CEO report at your December eighteenth meeting, I believe we're at that point. During my tenure as Chairman of the Weems Board, I realized that the Chairman of the Weems Board of Directors is as important as your CEO in order to have the best healthcare possible for residents and visitors of Franklin County. With that in mind, the Board approves this action, I request that the Weems Board of Directors recommend a candidate for the new chairman from the current members, and I will present that candidate at your February fifth regular meeting for your approval. Board action requesting a new candidate to serve as Chairman of the Weems Board of Directors and Director Attorney Schuler to make the appropriate changes to the Weems bylaws. Because right now it is, it's in the bylaws that it is the County Coordinator, which
Because right now, it's in the bylaws that it is the county coordinator, which is the role I serve, is the chairman of the Weems Board of Directors, if I'm not mistaken. So, that change would have to be made with the bylaws.
President of the board.
So moved.
Second, with a question, Mr. Chairman. Michael, would you continue to serve in that capacity until there was a new one recommended?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Just want to make sure.
All righty. Oh... I just want to make sure, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, as you're vetting your current Board of Directors for the hospital, you've got talent there, and I think you've also got a physician there, and I want to be sure that all of those board members are fully engaged and present at all meetings, and that's so important. So, you, I mean, you have this set group, and you're gonna really carefully look at their resumes and their motives and what they're all about, so that we get a good selected chairman with competencies. That's very important.
Mm-hmm. Especially with some...
I know you would.
Experience and some had to be...
Sure, okay. Is it possible to go outside the Board of Directors to find other talent to invite them on the board? Is that...
It is the pleasure of this board.
Alan, we looked, we saw a letter presented to every board member last meeting from a gentleman here who lives in our town. I would just recommend that he be considered in the mix, if he's even interested.
Yeah, I don't know, you'd have to be on the board, you'd have to, I don't know, there has to be some change in the bylaws to add either number of another board member.
We have a limit, we have a set number now?
Yes, so there's a set number, but if you're talking about replacing Mr. Morone as a board member, then you don't have a problem with being overpopulated on the Board of Directors.
Okay.
I don't know the gentleman's name, I haven't seen the letter, so I don't really know. I can't comment on what Commissioner Bolt, the individual Commissioner Bolt's referring to, but...
Well, what we're... Michael, if you will, how about get with Commissioner Bolt, get the man, get the gentleman name, write him a letter and tell him what we finna do, so if he want to put his name in the park.
Please.
Let me ask one question. So, are we saying now you want me to go beyond the scope of the members that sit on the board right now to look for a chairman? Is that what you...
No, yeah, I meant, no, what...
No, you don't want to go outside of what's currently there, because you bring somebody in from the outside, they don't even know what's going on.
Yeah.
So, that's not, that's not true, you need to look at the bylaws and how these members are selected. I think each commissioner has one representing his district, and you have so many of ours.
Yes, sir.
So, you need to look at the overall scope of thing, and where we're missing a member from, if it's from a commissioner's district, then that commissioner should appoint somebody, or bring us, you know, a name out of his district. So, I don't know where we're at with all that, but that's the way it needs to go.
Okay.
Somebody wants to volunteer, and you just pump them in there, what if they don't know nothing about our healthcare system, what we trying to achieve, where we're being, where we're going?
Yeah.
That's not the correct thing to do.
Okay.
Okay? So, you need to look at what the structure is now, and what the bylaws call for, and then determine where this individual needs to come from, whether it's my district, or Commissioner Jones, or Commissioner Lockley, or Commissioner Bolt. I mean, you need to look at this substance and the structure that's currently in place, Michael, and see where we at from there.
Okay.
If put it's a volunteer, we not paying. Because most of them going, you get on the outside, going to get paid.
Yeah.
If they don't, if they don't have the mentality in the, of trying to further the mission of Weems Memorial Hospital, then they don't need to be on that board.
Right.
I don't know this individual, I've not heard any names, so I don't know, but these are all things you need to look at.
Okay.
But get with Mr. Bolt, and get Commissioner Bolt, and get the name, but then we need to look at the structure of how everything, the puzzle goes together.
Yes, sir.
I was understanding, Mr. Chairman, I was understanding with our motion that we're gonna start with that Weems board anyway.
Yes, promote from within.
Yeah, yeah.
That is the motion, Commissioner.
That's what I understood, just...
Okay.
All righty, Weems board is here.
We haven't voted yet.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously.
Item five, as the board is probably aware, the Gulf Consortium Officer Elections will be held the first meeting in 2019, which is scheduled for January 31st, as Fair said earlier. And, the good news is, Commissioner Parrish is planning on running for the Secretary-Treasurer Officer seat on that executive board. One of the requirements to run for this office is written approval from his candidacy by this Board of County Commissioners. The letter must be provided to the consortium board manager prior to the election. As this board is fully aware, serving on the consortium's executive board would be very beneficial to the county. Board action to authorize Commissioner Parrish to seek the Secretary-Treasurer seat on the consortium executive board.
So moved. Sir.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mast, and second by Commissioner Parrish. Any more discussion?
It's great news.
Great news.
I don't know if I'll be successful, but we're gonna give it a shot.
You got it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. You mean to stand on the side of the road and hold up sign?
No, I ain't going back.
I loan you my sign.
I just got through, though.
Good luck. I'm being campaign man. All right, y'all ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously.
Next item attached to my report is a Dewberry contract for the design of Highway 67 project, which is a widening and resurfacing project. The county advertised for design services on September 20th for this project, and after reviewing the submitted packets, ranked Dewberry number one, which the board accepted on November 20th, 2018, and directed staff to negotiate a contract. This is that contract.
So moved.
This is FDOT SCOP-funded project, board action to authorize the chairman's signature on this contract.
Sir.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mast, and second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I, the motion we made contingent, I haven't seen that contract yet.
Okay, well, this will be contingent on what the lawyer said about it. Will y'all change your motion to that?
On and my second.
Amendment?
Yes, sir.
You amend.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the motion been amended. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously.
During a 2018-19 budget hearing, the board approved $51,581 for area agency and aging. Area agency and aging acts as the county's fiscal agent task with administering those funds to the agencies providing senior services in the county. We should have approved the fiscal agent memorandum of agreement, which is attached to my report at the board's regular meeting following those budget hearings, but failed to do that. I failed to do that. Board action to approve the fiscal agent memorandum of agreement with area agency and aging from North Florida for the allotted $51,581, and Attorney Schuler did review that MOA.
President of the board.
So moved.
Sir.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously.
Item eight, we're almost there. Inform the board that Commissioner Jones and I met with Mr. John Solomon, who's the Executive Director of the Bay Chamber of Commerce, to discuss the board, what the board expects as it relates to the monthly TDC administrative report. One agreed change is to have the administrative report presented at the Board of County Commissioners' first monthly meeting, as it is currently presented at the second monthly meeting. This would allow Mr. Solomon an opportunity to do adequate research on items approved at the TDC monthly meeting, should be in there, before discussing it with the county commission. Mr. Solomon will be at your February 5th meeting. He just looked at it and said, "It's too close." I'm sorry, Commissioner Jones, when are the TDC meetings?
We just had the last one today.
So, it'd have been today, so it wouldn't have given any time for him to do adequate research to get information, enough information to this board. He would just like more time, so we switched to the first meeting, and it'll start in February.
President of the board.
So moved.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burke.
Are you asking for some kind of board action?
No, I'm just letting you guys, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was letting you guys...
This is information.
If you had any, I should have said, "Do you have any problems with it," is what I, I should have ended my statement with.
Well, that wasn't on their board action, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
You guys are good with that?
Yep. Before you move on, Mr. Chairman, I want to say something. There are some things that that board approved at their last meeting, and again, like you said, Mr. Solomon wanted to have time to have everything coming, I just want to let you guys know that there will be some things on his report in February pending approval from us, so that that board approved. I'm not ready to talk about him today, because he's not here, I just want you guys to be aware. Had a very good meeting, though. I was really encouraged by it.
Okay.
Item number nine, during Hurricane Michael of 2003, Mazda pickup that was assigned to the courthouse maintenance, assigned to courthouse maintenance suffered flood damage. Prior to the storm, we were experiencing motor issues with the same truck. Based on this information, board action to remove this 2003 Mazda from county inventory and sell it for scrap. I know most times you hear me ask you to put it on auction, but because of the flooding, because of the other issues we had, we don't want to be responsible for this truck at all, so the same, by auction it off somewhere, somebody sues us, so the same company that picks up the scrap at the landfill will come and get the truck and give us whatever it's worth. Scrap.
Sir.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously.
Inform the board that 2K Web Group has completed the scans for the ADA compatibility on the county's website, in addition to the Parks and Rec and Emergency Management websites. They submitted the results in a report format, in Excel format, and from the scan, are in the process of bringing all three websites into compliance. What hasn't been decided is what to do about all the PDF documents on these websites that are not compliant. Attorney Schuler is still researching this matter to determine if the county can update all documents prior to 2019 on a, on a as-requested basis, and then make all documents uploaded from 2019 onwards ADA compliant, or if we can't, do we have to go back and do everything? As soon as that determination is made, I'll inform the board.
Okay.
Item 11. Staff has received a 2019 legislative budget request form from Senator Monford's office. Senator Monford is encouraging the county, and I quote, "To identify those programs, projects that have strong local community support and have been identified, recognized as a need by a state agency." Continued to quote, "Your assistance in addressing the most critical needs in your geographical community is also strongly encouraged." Furthermore, I am requesting that county and city governments combine and rank each budget request in one priority order," end quote. With a legislative session beginning on Tuesday, March 5th, Senator Monford has requested that these forms are in his office no later than Monday, February 11th. So, we have one meeting between now and then, Commissioners, to get that done, and I'll have to reach out to both cities and see if they have any, if there are any projects that they want to submit, and then we'll rank them at the, at your February 5th meeting, and then I'll turn them into Senator Monford's office. If we have...
They pushing it down.
As far as I'm concerned, your number one project is going to be to make sure that the legislative funds a new EOC for us. We had a commitment out of the previous DEM manager, but since he's no longer there, I don't know if that's carried forward, so when, so I think your number one priority is, you know, $3 million or whatever amount of money you want to ask for, for a new EOC, and make sure that's in the legislative request. It should, it should be in DEM's request, but I don't know if it is, because Wes Mull is no longer there.
That's correct.
And to, and to add to that, Alan, there was also something I read in several different news outlets since Wes left, there was, it looks like, less than 20% total of what had been funded through DEM had ever been spent, so...
Wow.
Yeah.
Not spent.
Less than 20.
Not spent.
Well, there's been a tremendous logjam. In fact, tomorrow morning, on Thursday, I have, there's a lady coming down from, DEM has hired a consultant to assist in getting the money flow, and the woman's coming down tomorrow, and on Thursday, Aaron and I are meeting with her to try and make sure that the pipe is open, you know, that we're getting, because we're, we have, as you already heard earlier, we have several hundred thousand dollars worth of money, it's outstanding, we've already made reversals for it, hasn't come through. Some of that may be held up because of congressional shutdown, but some of it's held up because DEM is not processing things fast enough. So, we're gonna meet tomorrow morning to see if we can get that money back in the account.
So, what they want us to do is ask the cities what they want, both cities, then we put down what we want, then we come back.
You all were the final say of what's...
And we said...
You said a priority.
So, I'm pretty sure, Commissioner, the priority is X million dollars for a new EOC, that's already your priority, because...
I know. Well, what, well, what we asking the city for?
Anyone else to tell you?
Because, because, Commissioner, Senator Monford asked me to ask the city, basically, sir.
Tell Monford to get that money, and when he back, get it off my...
Well, as a matter of fact, my next item is, Senator Monford's staff has reserved the meeting room.
February, I don't think they even meet again until...
They'll meet the first Tuesday of February.
February 5th. And have to have...
Which we're supposed to meet and make a decision.
Yeah.
But they meet in the evenings, we meet in the mornings, so...
Yeah, we're gonna make, we're gonna give the offer, and just...
We'll just, we'll just...
Keep it, keep it open, so they know we've got an invitation for them, we really want them to...
I follow, I think the notification should be, you know, we think the number one priority is a new EOC, you know, at the court.
And isn't Senator Monford and his delegation...
But it does benefit everybody.
I know.
Mr. Chairman, isn't Senator Monford and his delegation coming to see us sometime in January?
My next, my next item.
Yeah, they'll be...
Oh, there it is, okay.
That Senator Monford's staff has reserved this meeting room on Wednesday, January 30th, at 6:30 PM, for the Senator's Legislative Delegation. Once I've received final confirmation from his staff, I'll make sure I inform the board. So, Chairman Lockley, you, you have an opportunity to come?
I'm gonna tell him.
Yes, sir, I know you will say that to him. I'm sure it'll be just, I'm sure it'll be just the Senator, because I don't think Mr. Halsey has transferred over, so I don't think there'll be anybody coming with him.
I don't think he's right for him to put that, put that on us.
Yeah.
Okay.
As far as I'm concerned, with Mark's here, I realize we have to wait and get a timeline of February 11th. I would just soon recommend you all tell him, the legislative, the issue number one hearing is the EOC, get that, let him know as soon as, as soon as you can.